... Management Agency for today, Friday, May 13th. Yeah, if you'll please rise, Gene, if you'll lead us.
Sure. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Tammy Rolco, please.
Chair Malvern?
Yes, here.
Director Craven?
Here.
Director Bennett?
Here.
Director what?
Here.
Here. Okay, agenda review, any changes to the agenda?
None.
Okay. Public comments, anybody in the public have any comments of items not on the, of the item not on the agenda? Okay. Board member comments? All right. Item number one, draft brackish groundwater supply policy. Holly.
Good afternoon, I'm Al Harder, Director of Lady's Department. My name is Holly Clifford, and I'm here today to discuss the draft brackish groundwater supply policy. There's been a great deal of stakeholder interest in this, and I'm sure a few people would like to speak on this matter, but I'd like to take some time first to walk you through how we ended up here today. I'm not requesting that you approve the draft brackish groundwater supply policy. Instead, I'm seeking guidance on the matter and direction for moving forward. The idea of a policy relating to brackish groundwater is not new to the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency. There are references scattered throughout the 2007 update to the groundwater management plan. It contains references to the mound of brackish water in the South Las Poses Basin and suggests it would be a good idea if it was pumped to create space in the aquifer for less saline winter storm water to percolate into the aquifer. It also describes the mound of brackish water beneath the city of Camarillo. The plan goes further stating extraction of this groundwater is an appropriate groundwater management strategy, providing that extracting the groundwater improves the overall water quality in the basin without also causing overpumping of the basin, or extracting the groundwater provides a new water supply outside of those currently allocated by the GMA. And it states if these conditions are not met, then the extraction should be debited against an existing allocation. Further, your board also approved Resolution 2003-3, indicating that upon its review and approval, your board may change or alter an allocation for pumping from the South Las Poses Basin to accommodate a responsible entity that submits a plan to render this brackish groundwater usable. With that said, the purpose of the policy is to provide a better framework for project proponents interested in developing brackish groundwater as a resource, and highlights the procedures being followed for the benefit of all stakeholders. Before describing the policy, I'd just like to take a step back to highlight how the GMA currently does business. A project proponent undertakes a technical and financial review first to determine from their business perspective whether or not a particular project will make sense. And as they're getting more serious about this, they typically come to the board numerous times and make presentations to engage you in the process, to see what the GMA is thinking about it, as well as to provide the stakeholders with additional information. As they develop their project even further, they should include analysis in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. They must comply with this particular act. And so we see it numerous times. And then after considerable technical and financial review, project proponents next approach the GMA, your board, for project approval. The GMA, of course, indicates that the project must demonstrate no net detriment to the groundwater basin. Concerns are centered on items such as groundwater levels, water quality, seawater intrusion, and more. I just picked those out as examples. Once no net detriment has been established, project proponents are typically then given approval by the board to pump. I'm making that sound a lot simpler than it really is, and it does require a considerable amount of stakeholder engagement, as well as engagement at the board level. However, and I think this is a big however, there are often conditions applied to the pumping that are captured in a monitoring and mitigation plan. If X happens, the project proponent must do Y or reduce pumping. So they're giving a series of conditions that they must comply with. I also want to reiterate that the board also has the authority to direct a reevaluation to be undertaken on a regular basis, say every five years. Project proponents could be required to verify that the thresholds and associated actions are still appropriate, given the conditions in the basin. If not, new thresholds and actions could be identified and approved. In the parlance which we tend to use, we call this adaptive management. So project proponents are required to prepare monitoring and mitigation plans that conform to the conditions imposed by your board. They report on a regular basis and must take action if issues arise. And we want to make sure that continues on an ongoing basis. The adaptive management is certainly essential in an arena of decision-making with interrelated variables and unknowns. As we grow our knowledge and understanding of the groundwater basins in the future moving forward, we certainly have a clearer understanding of the impacts of projects, from the pumping by all users, from wet and dry cycles, and many other things that may clearly indicate the need for changes. The draft policy in front of you, then, is merely a way of capturing existing practices in a formal manner and offering a means of fully utilizing a marginal resource. The policy briefly outlines the technical requirements and analyses that must be prepared and undertaken by project proponents, including SEQA considerations. It highlights the requirement of the project proponent to prepare a project proposal, complete with a suggested annual groundwater extraction, estimated project life, and a monitoring and contingency plan associated with the proposed extraction. To maintain the integrity of the groundwater basin, there needs to be specific constraints and conditions placed on the brackish groundwater project to ensure adequate resources for the beneficial uses and users of the groundwater without undesirable results. As shown in the policy, the monitoring and contingency plan is required to avoid undesirable results and will result in a stepwise reduction in pumping if specific measurable objectives are reached, indicating the potential for these undesirable results. These thresholds are, must be identified and closely monitored. The policy then provides more of a standard format for project proposals and for the review of the projects. The policy provides a roadmap for potential use of the brackish groundwater. If we sort of take a step back and assume then, successful completion of the SEQA process, a successful monitoring contingency plan approved by the executive officer, your board then has the opportunity to consider approving groundwater extractions for the project. Or you could simply relook the monitoring and contingency plan, ask for clarifications, ask for changes to that, or subject to additional review and monitoring on an ongoing basis, as I mentioned previously, perhaps five years, which is in a manner similar to the groundwater sustainability plan implementation outlined in SIGMA. This form of adaptive management actually is seen as one of the cornerstones of SIGMA. It's recognizing that we are dealing with unknowns and that our knowledge and understanding of the basins will grow over time. In fact, the procedures outlined in the draft policy could be revised to include a mandatory review every five years, should your board so desire. The draft policy was undertaken with SIGMA in mind. The undesirable results in the policy have been written to reflect the terminology in SIGMA. This is important, as the term no net detriment is not nearly as definitive or illustrative as it should be. And finally, the policy briefly outlines the roles and responsibilities associated with We've received some correspondence largely from those opposing the draft policy. Their concerns have really focused around some of these key areas, though they've articulated others. Ownership and/or the definition of the water. Concern has been expressed that project proponents may not have the rights to the water, and that the water is currently being used by some pumpers. I'll leave the water rights issues to the lawyers and others, but I just wanted to point out that the source of the brackish groundwater needs to be considered as part of the project plan and subsequent approval of groundwater pumping and the conditions associated with it. The next issue is related to whether or not the project should be regional, some of the regional considerations. The policy does not define the need to develop regional projects rather than ones that are by individual agencies or organizations. We've heard that some stakeholders would like to see desalters as regional facilities only, rather than those operated by the single entities. We've been assured that people would be willing to pay a replenishment fee of $200 to $300 per acre foot to see this happen. However, the infrastructure may not be available to deliver the water, and all pumpers in that circumstance, though, would assume the risk if the project fails. Where the project proponents stepping forward, they alone assume the financial risk and are responsible for the GMA conditions of the project. And they're responsible then to the GMA for protecting the groundwater basin and all the other users of the groundwater. I believe the policy does not need to define whether or not these projects should be regional or if they can be done by a single entity. I think that's a decision your board can make upon submission by the project proponents. This policy does not preclude regional projects, nor does it preclude the regional distribution of water. Concerns have been expressed that the policy is not consistent with SIGMA, or that it short-circuits SIGMA, or that it short-circuits the GSP process. As I've mentioned, the policy was written and seems to be consistent with SIGMA. You'll hear commentary, as I mentioned, about the term no net detriment. That's a simple fix. We can remove that term and refer to undesirable results clearly as they're written in the SIGMA documentation. I certainly agree with the letter submitted by L-PUG that indicates no detriment could have unintended consequences. Looking at those undesirable results seems to be preferable, and we can look at other aspects of the policy to make sure that we are completely consistent and in step with SIGMA. The stickiest question relating to SIGMA is whether or not brackish groundwater should be part of a sustainability and allocation considerations through the GSP process. I believe the policy should help to inform the GSP process rather than impede the process. Project proponents will need to undertake a great deal of work regarding the water and potential undesirable results. The source of the water and the use of the water will ultimately be subject to much debate. This policy isn't a get-out-of-jail-free card. There has to be a tremendous amount of analysis moving forward. The bottom line is that the draft policy before you was a strawman proposal designed to initiate discussion. Yes, it did that. I had naively thought people would be interested in evaluating the merits of the policy and offering suggestions to enhance or modify the policy. Seems not to have been the case. But a policy such as this one does not provide any entity with the authority to proceed with a project just because they seem to have checked all the boxes. The policy instead provides a framework for consideration of projects and informs project proponents and stakeholders about what is required for a project to even be considered. Your board will still have a tremendous amount of latitude to require adaptive management to ensure projects do not impact sustainability, other pumpers, and the environment, just to name a few. And your board will still have the ability to say no to a project proposal for any number of reasons. The next steps then moving forward could include policy refinement and procedure development to further address the concern of the stakeholders. And we need to review the process and regulatory issues associated with it, and ones that will become apparent, including but not limited to potential ordinance changes. And with that brief overview, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does the board members have any questions at this time? All right, let me turn to the audience. Before I do that, I forgot to acknowledge that Bob Aranio and Andy Waters, and I don't see any other alternates that are in the audience. By the way, for everybody, we have been reissued a series of letters. Tammy has emailed, anybody that's emailed a, even, out in the front, anybody that emailed one, Andy, we've got your revised letter. We got one about an hour ago from Wistoya, so all those have been emailed. So I think we've made opportunity for members to see correspondence if they looked at their email. Andy?
Andy Waters, L-PUG chair. I sit on the advisory council for District One, which has a desalination plant in the works. I sit on the board of Burlwood Water Company, which has a problem with salt migrations up the hill. This concern of mine is very near and dear, so I'm just going to keep my comments real brief. If we need to get back up and discuss more and more questions about the correspondence, then I'll be fine. But this policy and the way that it's expressed is bad timing, I believe. It's impeding our process to get forth with the SIGMA process and the GSP that L-PUG has been tasked with, that we really need to focus on. I brought that up at the last time, public comment, when we discussed this, and staff had made the comment that, you know, we throw L-PUG a little loop, and, you know, this is where we're at. So my concern is that your board, this group, when it makes a recommendation to staff, and I went back and watched the meeting notes from, I think it was the 27th, your comment, chair, was, maybe we need a policy. So then you direct staff as, maybe we need a policy, and they spend an absorbent amount of time working through this. I mean, this man has done great work with this policy. Bad timing, it's not good for my cause, I believe, both from Moore Park standpoint, from Burlwood standpoint, from L-PUG standpoint, and now we're here today for a special meeting to discuss this one point. And my concerns is the money and the time that is spent from both staff, L-PUG, and all the other stakeholder involvement groups, and this county, to get where we're at today. So that's my concerns. I can address any questions about the comment letters, but...
Okay, all right. Thank you, Andy.
Robert Aranio here, on behalf of Crestview Mutual Water Company. The recommendation here and the request by staff is to provide direction on the implementation and how to move forward with this. I offer another alternative, is that the recommendation be for this policy to be killed and integrated into the GSP process for each basin. The policy itself and what's presented does have some good ideas and some healthy merits, but those should be incorporated into each GSP that's being developed for that basin and for that specific plan, and not be held outside as its own unique agreement and things in order to move, trying to move things forward. Additionally, I would also offer that maybe Resolution 2003-03 should be rescinded, because it no longer represents our understanding of how the basin works. We keep citing a resolution there, and we have found through our L-PUG process that the understanding and beliefs as to why that was developed no longer apply. So maybe we should talk about trying to get that resolution off of the books, so it stops being referred to. Thank you.
Okay. Carol?
Carol Shon, Zone Mutual Water Company. I have a couple of points I'd like to make, and I'll be brief. Number one, Zone uses that brackish water. That's part of our supply. It has been part of our supply since it started flowing in the 70s. The wells that we have in our basin that provide more than half of the company's waters have been there since the 20s. We rely on this recharge. So it isn't that it is a separate body of water that no one has been using, and that it, we have been using it. We blend it, but we use it. And so that would be my first point. I don't want it to be an impression that it's something that is set aside and not being used. It is, by many pumpers along the Arroyo, not just Zone. The second part of this is that, for many years now, when we look at the brine line being installed and desalters being planned, Zone's been planning for a desalter. We've put tens of thousands of dollars through the years into studies, a pilot study, and everything else to figure out where we're putting our desalter, how we're going to put it to use, but we are right now on hold. And why? Because we are trying to be good citizens of our Las Poses Basin and not come ahead of everybody and say, look, we want to have a special dispensation for the amount that we're going to waste, because we know our allocations are coming, pumping's going to get ratcheted down. Zone isn't trying to move ahead and get any kind of special permissions for water ahead of everybody else. We know that we probably can't afford an allocation for that waste at this point in time. But we understand that it all needs to be considered in the GSP process as the yield of the basin, and that it isn't right for us to step ahead of our neighbor and say, we're going to pump more, we're going to waste this much, and you have to pump that much less. That's not how it should be. So we're all trying to work together, and I think having a policy like this has put an incredible wedge in the middle of us moving forward. I would ask the board to please just kill the project, kill the policy. Thank you.
Thank you. John, this gentleman behind you.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to comment on Agenda One. I'm Sean Corrigan, Public Works Director for the City of Moore Park. The City of Moore Park supports the district's idea, proposed pumping and treatment of poor quality groundwater near our city. The district provides our citizens with potable water, more than 80% of which is imported. We understand that the Moore Park desalter may ultimately satisfy as much as half of the district's demand for potable water. In our view, a local, more reliable source of water will greatly benefit the citizens of Moore Park and the surrounding area. Additionally, it is our understanding that the project will improve water quality in the watershed and create additional underground storage. Thanks again for the opportunity to address the board.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. I am John Grether. I'm a grower in the Las Poses Valley, and I'm also vice chairman of the board of Zone Mutual. I'd like to say first that Carol's comments are very appropriate. Zone has used that water. Others in the eastern part of the Las Poses also use that water, and it's part of, and that's one of the reasons this has become a contentious issue. I also would like to say that I appreciate the outreach that Mr. Clifford has made earlier this afternoon, because it's really the first time there's been comments made publicly that this is not a project that needs approval at this moment, that this draft policy is up for consideration. It's been difficult to know exactly what the county has in mind here, and now it seems to be pulling back a bit, which I appreciate, because there hasn't been the communication with L-PUG or with individual users in the Las Poses that I think's appropriate. The policy that, I was prepared this afternoon to talk about a number of the details of the specific policy, with the concern that if this moves forward, those details seem to be locked in, and evidently they're not, but there are a number of contradictions in the language of the policy as it is, and I don't want to get into the weeds and be too long, but I'd like to mention a few. First, the draft ascribes the responsibility of the project proponent to complete a, quote, "groundwater study to determine no net detriment to the groundwater basin."
John, if I may, so we can follow you. What, there are two pages to the policy. Where are you reading from?
Under responsibilities.
Okay. Okay, page two at the top, okay?
Yeah, page two at the top. Under the first paragraph of responsibilities. Well, I want to say that I don't think that's enough, because the basin's quite large. It includes the Fox Canyon groundwater as a portion of it. It's, you know, it's thousands of acres, thousands of acre-feet of water use, and to think in terms of no net detriment is very narrow, in the sense that it's a big basin, and there would be a lot of factors that would go into it. One of the most critical is what is the impact on neighboring wells, on property owners and pumpers who are right adjoining a project, and that needs to be considered as, just as much as the overall basin. Secondly, you know, I like Mr. Pratt. I think he's a good guy, but...
Ah, there's the buddy. We knew.
But the draft...
Did you say that?
But the draft states in number two, in the next paragraph, that the FCGMA executive officer approves the project monitoring and contingency plans, and yet that's the very same chief executive officer of the county wastewater project that's being proposed. To me, that's a conflict of interest that needs to be discussed more and made clear so that we don't have problems going forward. Carol mentioned the brackish water, so I won't go into that again. And, you know, you should also realize that the definition of brackish water would include much of the South Las Poses area, much of the area that's beyond the scope of what I think is contemplated for the Water Works project. And if brackish water is defined that broadly, then that would potentially mean that a lot more water projects might fall under this policy. And so I think there needs to be a greater understanding of what is being intended by the term brackish water. There's contradictory language under the definition of terms, under monitoring and contingency plan. One sentence says the components of the monitoring and contingency plan must be measurable, with associated actions identified. The very next sentence says, for example, the plan may, not should, not shall, but may include measurable objectives. To me, that's loose, sloppy language. It's very important that we consider the impact of recharge to down gradient basins and other areas. We can't just limit it, and down at the very bottom of the page, under undesirable results, number seven and number eight indicate, number seven is, impact on recharge to other down gradient basins or areas. Well, what kind of an impact? A big impact, a significant impact, an unreasonable impact? There's no definition of the term. The same is true for number eight, on the impact on production of adjacent wells. It's unspecified as to what that really means. We've heard today, comments by, that this policy is trying to emulate some of the requirements of SIGMA. Well, the policy ought to say that, and nowhere in the policy does it ever mention SIGMA. That's what the governing body of groundwater policy in the state of California is now, and yet it's not mentioned. And to me, that's absolutely fundamental. This has become a very contentious issue in the Las Poses, at L-PUG, in, you know, the farmer talk, everything else, and it really needs to be diffused, and it needs to, there need to be workshops, and there need to be a much better effort by the part of the county, by the part of Water Works districts, and all the stakeholders to come together. Some years ago, Craig Underwood, as chair, and I, as vice chair, met with the general manager of Water Works, and we suggested that we would like to work together with him to have a regional solution that both agriculture and municipal and industrial users could all benefit. And that was flatly rejected, and we at Zone greatly resent that, that we were excluded from that discussion and from that process, and I would really encourage the GMA to direct that there be a much greater outreach and much more of an effort made to find a regional solution, rather than a specific solution that really benefits just Water Works. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes?
Is that the general manager? Who is that, John?
Ready to call him? Okay, all right, thanks, John. Oh, yeah, that's fine. John?
I'm John Orr with Del Norte Water Company, and one would think that, since we're at the west end of the Las Poses Valley, our dog wouldn't be in this fight, and it actually isn't technically in the fight, except that procedurally it is. And that is, the GMA here has...
has agreed and has decided that there will be separate GSPs within its own basin, and one of those GSPs is LPG. And this is an effort, as Del Norte sees it, to emasculate the LPG GSP. This is a request that's coming around, coming directly to GMA, instead of going through a normal LPG process. And we are, while we're dealing with allocations, while we're dealing with the issues of what we're going to do with the limited supply we have, we have a situation where the county, through District 1 and 19, are asking to make an end run around that process and ask who for a, for a, for some relief, their own self. They're asking the head of the, Mr. Pratt, as head of the GMA, to make that kind of a decision, and I don't think it's appropriate, and I think that the problem here is process. I think that this kind of thing is going to happen. We know that. I think everyone knows that. But is it going to be a desalter for an individual body, like Districts 1 and 19, or is it going to be a regional desalter? There may be reasons that we'd want to have it one way or the other. That ought to be first addressed at the LPG level, and then that ought to be brought here. But I don't think that going around the LPG is going to do anything other than to create a real issue among farmers and among others as to what is, who really is, what power, if any, does LPG have? Because if one can go around it and have an allocation of virtually half the water in the east Las Poses without going through the LPG process, we don't have power. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Jeanette Lombardo, California Food and Agribusiness Advocates. I'm actually not going to talk about LPG. I'm going to talk about the Camarillo Desalter. And coming here today, I'd hope to hear from the staff to address one of the issues in the Camarillo letter, which has to do with the salts TMDL, which their desalter is a key component in solving for the LA Regional Water Quality Control Board. I'm thinking what we have to do is, we're trying to create a policy that fits the whole Fox Canyon GMA, and just whereas we're doing GSPs for each individual basin, I think the policies have to be individualized as well. If we don't have the desalter in Camarillo up by 2018, we have to reopen the TMDL and come up with alternative solutions. That desalter can have water in the area in 2018, and it's, we all know that it's sized larger than what the city needs, so there's an opportunity for water to remain in that basin. We can't ignore that in light of everything else. It all has to be taken into consideration. So I'm just wanting, I don't know the answers. I'm wanting some clarification on the cost to the county to reopen the TMDL and other alternatives. I think that has to be part of this discussion as well, because it, like I said, they are, they're under a time schedule order to deliver on, and this is to be delivered on in less than 24 months. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Dave?
Chairman Alhart, other board members, Dave Sasek from Ventura County Water Works. I hesitate to even come up here, because I think this project is not, or this proposed policy is not about the project, and I think by me coming up here, it gets you guys to think a lot about the project itself. I think Carol Schoen had a Freudian slip when she said, "Kill the project." It's unfortunate that in years and years of discussing this, we're now being told that we're not reaching out to the LPG, we're not following, and we've been with them, I briefed them numerous times myself. I've actually had two or three conversations with Carol Schoen about the possibility of creating a regional desalter so that ag could take water before we treat it for distribution for drinking water. So there's a lot of distraction. There's, hey, see this bright shiny object over here? Don't focus on that. And I think the board really needs to come back and think about what we're talking about here, which is a policy. A lot of people are going to talk about who owns the water, all that stuff. There's different segments of the process where those questions can be answered that are separate from this particular policy that we're looking for the board to discuss and ask staff to continue to flesh out. All this does, in my mind, is create a roadmap where your board will have a framework to evaluate these projects and answer some of these questions that have been raised today. Again, I don't have a lot of experience in the water business. As you know, I've only been here about a year and a half, two years, and I think that that's a good thing, because I'm not jaded by some of the past experience or some of the past relationships that may have, that may be getting in the way of some of these things. As was brought earlier, my predecessor refused to talk to anybody about this, and I haven't. I've offered. I've said, "Hey, let's sit down and talk about this," and we're open to that. And us developing this project now does not preclude partnership later. We know there are some technical difficulties with the regional desalter because of the distribution and trying to get the water out. It may benefit some users in the basin, but I think there's some difficult challenges getting that water out to all the users in the basin. And as I think about this, you know, this is an important issue for everybody that works in this basin. The longer we talk about this, if we, you know, continue to kick this can down the road, the salts continue to get higher, you know, the migration continues to be there, the quality groundwater continues to degrade. Water Works District 1 is willing to take the risk, to develop this project, to take some action. We've already invested a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of energy in this. There's no risk to the ag users out there, because there's going to be controls in place. Our plan has some things that were put out there. These are all things for discussion, and you will control that, and it's an iterative process, and you can dial back our pumping if necessary. So, again, as I said, I hesitate to come up and even talk about this, because I don't think the discussion should be about the Water Works District 1 desalter. I think it needs to be about a framework whereby this board can actually put some meat on the bones and allow projects to be evaluated consistently, and I don't think it's separate and distinguishable from the GSP. I think it feathers right in and can easily fit and parallel from there. So, again, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Fox with the City of Camarillo, and I'm here representing the North Pleasant Valley Desalter Project. And speaking from that perspective, we can support the policy that's in front of you today. However, we also acknowledge there's other issues. There's been some good points raised today, and that you may need more time to consider this item, whether it's a policy that you take up later, or whether you take a different direction. We can appreciate that's something you might have to consider, and if you do, I want to talk about what that does to the schedule for our project and how we might be able to keep things moving forward. So really, two points. I'll identify why we can support the policy, and then also talk about our schedule. The reason we support the policy is, quite honestly, it's based on work that we've been involved with your GMA staff for the last two years. It would have been great to have this policy two years ago, to provide a roadmap. Where we've ended up, you could pretty well say today, just make the policy do what Camarillo has to do, and we'd be, I think, have a pretty solid direction. The contingency, monitoring and contingency plan that we've developed with your staff has reached a point that we're wrapping it up. The plan is very prescriptive. It doesn't leave anything up to guesswork. It identifies clear triggers and mitigation, and what needs to be done to ensure there is no impact to the basin. So, the policy, at least as it's been crafted, is really based on what we've already achieved. A lot of it's modeled after what we've put together, working with your staff, and certainly can support that, because it echoes what we've already achieved. Two other points, and again, whether it goes into a policy, and if not a policy, something that at some point, maybe in an agreement with our project, that has to be clarified and is clarified in the policy. One is that the, it identifies the executive officer can cancel pumping authorization and defines under what circumstances. That's very critical, because when I present a contract to my council for millions and millions of dollars, they need to understand there's risks, and that if there's a risk that the project could be shut down, they need to know that, but at least this helps clarify what the risk is, under what terms it would occur, and somewhat defines the risks, and we need that. Also, it identifies that there's a willingness to consider extending the life of our project. I think that's important, because while we're planning on a 25-year project, if at the end there's still brackish water and a benefit of continuing the project to deal with water quality issues, I think it makes sense to consider extending it if it's a benefit. And I think it's important to memorialize now that that's something we're thinking about, because in 25 years, most likely, none of us will be here in our current capacity, and it's important that we at least memorialize for those in the future that this is something we want to be able to consider. So again, the policy certainly lays out some things that are good and important for us to have on the record and have described. Again, if not in a policy, there are other ways to do it. Again, perhaps in agreement. One thing that we felt that could have been provided, could provide a little more guidance would be on how you want input from stakeholders. I think the direction we got was, go work it out. I think a year ago when we were here, the direction we got, we were given some homework to do, and that was one of the homework items. We're fortunate that in the Pleasant Valley Basin, in our area where the brackish water is occurring, and we have a groundwater study that defines that area pretty well. We only have really four major stakeholder groups. We have the farmers, and they have American Water working with them. We have Pleasant Valley Mutual. We have the Oxnard Union High School District and the city that have wells in this area. And all of the stakeholders we've worked together with to try and develop a project that everybody can support. We're still trying to put the finishing touches on that, but I can say that everybody has a good respect for each other, and we understand each other's goals, and we've worked in a way that I think will be able to bring a project to you that addresses all of the stakeholder concerns that had been expressed in the past. Also, the other homework items you gave us, we feel we've worked with your staff to address those and are really ready to present a project. We were even trying to get on your May agenda, your regular agenda, but we still have some finishing touches, some details to work out, so we're now looking for June. Time is of the essence. You heard one of the reasons why with our TMDL time schedule order. There's other reasons I can go into as well, if you're interested, that why we're not even living on borrowed time, we're barely surviving on borrowed time right now, and time is of the essence to get our project in front of you to consider it. So if you're not able to approve a policy today, we would at least request that you allow our project to continue to be agendized. Everything that a policy would lay out for us to achieve, we've already achieved. A policy wouldn't really give us any guidance or direction that would change our outcome at this point, other than if we wait on a policy and it takes some time, we won't have a project anymore. So, again, if you choose not to approve the policy today, we would request that you at least give direction to your staff to go ahead and agendize our desalter project when it is ready, and again, we're hoping next month in June that we would have it in front of you, and then we would present the project on the merits of the project, and you'd be able to make a decision at that time based on the information we'd bring forward. So, thank you for your time, and be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions? Thanks, Tom. I'll let this, Brian, we'll let this gentleman go first.
Warren Bill Manzer from Pleasant Valley Mutual. We're tied very closely to the North Pleasant Valley Project. We are tied with Camarillo, City of Camarillo, and we are on a timeline. We have all of our grant money. We have, we're a little bit further along in design than the City of Camarillo is. We have our iron and manganese plant already in existence for quite a few years. We want, we want the policy now so that we can get on with our Prop 84 grant for three and a quarter million to do our project. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian? Brian?
Afternoon, Chairman Alhart, Directors. Brian Boni-Kaiis, also Director Borchards, Representative on TAG. Andy Waters asked me to provide some additional comments on behalf of LPG. Certainly, you have our letters. They're very detailed. They go to great lengths to explain where we believe the draft policy is inconsistent with the process the state has laid out for Sigma. I just wanted to highlight a couple of those issues. We think that there's sort of a fundamental question that hasn't been asked, that probably should be asked before we decide whether or how to approve desalters, and that question is simply, how should the existing developable water resources in the basin, including brackish groundwater, be shared by the users? Very simple question. It was mentioned earlier, I think, by Tully, that the 2007 Groundwater Management Plan contemplates developing brackish groundwater. Certainly, that's in there. No question about that, but if you go back and look at the plan, it doesn't talk about who should do it, who should pay, who should benefit. It just says, "Here's an opportunity." This is a potential management action. I think most of LPG believes that we should go back and answer that question. If we don't, we may not be complying with Sigma and the GSP process. Sigma is very clear that it requires this agency and other GSAs to consider all groundwater resources, and that includes brackish groundwater, all beneficial uses of water, and all groundwater rights. All those things have to be considered in developing a GSP. And so the concern is that if we move forward with a separate process through a policy such as this, that we'd be continuing to ignore that fundamental question about how to develop and utilize the resource, which, of course, Sigma is directly asking that that question be contemplated, and the beneficial uses, the rights, and the development of the resource. So, clearly, it's inconsistent, and we think would be a bad policy and a bad process moving forward, given everything we need to do under Sigma. Some of us believe that if we go through the GSP planning process, we're going to have an opportunity to look at what's going on in the basin, what are the resources available, what are our options? And we may come to a conclusion, I'm not saying we would, but we could come to a conclusion, that desalters, particularly those types of desalters that are looking to rely on new or increased pumping, might be completed as regional projects, so that the water supply benefit of those projects, not just the salt removal, but the water supply benefit of those projects, could be shared by all users in the basin. And that doesn't mean that the water from that project has to make it to every single user in the basin. That water can offset pumping in some areas of the basin, which has a benefit everywhere. The concern is that if there's a policy and a process for approving pumping of a portion of the groundwater resources in the basin, in this case, we're talking about brackish groundwater, that we may lose the opportunity in the GSP process, if something's approved ahead of time, to ask those questions, to ask the question of, "What's the best use of this water? What's the best thing for the basin?" And that we could be foreclosing on opportunities or management strategies in the GSP process that we might find we wanted to consider. Even if there weren't questions about the groundwater resources and how they should be shared, we're not sure that the policy fully addresses the requirements of Sigma. We're going to have the GSP regulations come out next month. We're going to have things in there called minimum thresholds, measurable objectives. These are measurable groundwater levels, quality criteria, that we're going to have to define how to meet and what level. The policy does not require that the GMA or the project proponent analyze how the project would impact the ability to achieve and maintain levels and quality at those thresholds. And in fact, it would be impossible for this agency or a project proponent to do that prior to the adoption of GSP, because those thresholds will not have been defined. So, the no net detriment concept could potentially allow a project to be approved, where you strike a balance between, say, quality and levels, but at the end of the day, that, striking of that balance, may make it more difficult to achieve level criteria, whether you're talking about surface water depletion or groundwater levels. And the concern is that that could leave the remainder of the basin being obligated to cut back pumping or pay for projects to attain those sustainability levels. And so really, the analysis needs to be holistic. You need to be looking at the thresholds for the basin with the project in that context, and that's just simply something you can't do until you have those defined in the GSP. So in summary, LPG is very concerned about the policy for the reasons I stated. We're not considering all the groundwater resources through this policy, all the beneficial uses, all the rights, and it doesn't address the sustainability... And it doesn't address the sustainability criteria. The staff has mentioned that they've tried to make the policy consistent with SIGMA, but that's really not good enough. We need to meet the requirements of SIGMA. That's the agency's obligation. And so it's LPUG's position that there should be no policy or no process, at least for the Los Poses basin area. These issues may not be the same in the Pleasant Valley. We don't want to speak about Pleasant Valley. That's not our basin. But we would like to see the consideration of how we're going to use all the groundwater resources, how we're going to consider the rights, how we're going to consider the beneficial uses. To that, to be done through SIGMA, through the GSP process. And out of that will come what the projects that need to move forward. And it may be the case that we end up with the same projects that are already being talked about today. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Brian. Lynn?
Thank you, Chair Mulholland, excuse me, Chair Mulholland and Board members. I'm Lynn Jensen with Ventura County Colab. We recently just published a newsletter with respect to the process of the Fox Canyon groundwater sustainability plans under the Groundwater Sustainability Management Act. And Colab members are actually stakeholders in this process. Fox Canyon is leading the county and maybe even in the state in pushing forward to create these groundwater sustainability plans required under SIGMA by 2020 or 2022, depending on whether the basin is in critical overdraft. And the plan instead for this agency is to create them in one year by, I guess, January of 2017 is the date. Based on feedback from local groundwater professionals, this is a breakneck pace that will likely sacrifice scientific veracity for speed and will greatly limit the opportunity for the agency to carefully consider thoughtful stakeholder input. We think the same urgency is problematic to the brackish groundwater supply policy. New groundwater supply projects are part of an overall groundwater management strategy and are integral to the development of the groundwater sustainability plans. How can they be considered separately? The new SIGMA legislation is not even entirely settled. It's not final until June. The overall groundwater sustainability plans and brackish water projects that support the plans need to be developed together. Desalter policies must consider all groundwater resources, all beneficial uses, and all groundwater rights as required by SIGMA. As one who has been regularly attending many meetings, particularly the Fox Canyon Tag meetings, it is not clear yet to me what the pathway is to drive this process to a successful conclusion that beneficial users of the water will collectively have confidences, confidence in, and they must. Allowing pumping of water that is, that has an existing beneficial use without consideration within the overall plan will usurp the process. Colab does not support this policy as written, and one of the questions that we'd like answered is, is it needed now for projects that are in the queue to move forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Members?
Do you have a question?
Okay.
I've got a question for staff and our council. Statement in one of the, one of the letters and sort of an implication in some of the other letters, but an actual statement, it says, "To adopt this policy now would have the effect of guaranteeing an allocation of brackish water for desalters." Is that, in fact, a true statement from your perspective, County Council, I mean, Council and staff? Does this guarantee an allocation for brackish water desalters?
I don't think there's a real direct and clear answer to that question. I think that should the, should the policy be approved, and should a project proponent then come forward and meet all the requirements under the policy, the board could certainly authorize the pumping associated with, with that project, subject to the conditions of the, of a mitigation plan, monitoring contingency plan.
I have a different answer to that question, and it's much more direct. The, does it guarantee you? No. There's four boxes they got to operate in. One is the box we're operating in right now, these meetings going through, making consistent with SIGMA. Two is SEQA. They got to get through the SEQA process. For everybody in the audience who doesn't know what that means, that's a disclosure document. You tell everybody what your impacts are going to be, and you get to let them argue about whether or not you've got them right. Then you tell them what you're going to do to mitigate it. The third thing they do is come and see you for mitigation and monitoring. So they come here, they say, okay, we've gone through this process with the stakeholders and this public process, and we propose to do the following. Your staff recommends to you what the mitigation and monitoring will be. Whether it's the XO or you're making the final decision, it doesn't really matter. It's going to be a staff recommendation to you. The fourth box, and the one I think you're asking about, is the box where it's adaptive management. We get new information later, it changes. That, I think, is your question. So if for some reason there are assumptions that went into it, everybody agreed with through the SEQA process and in the public, prove to be wrong later, it gets adjusted.
So I'll ask it, I want to just ask it this way. Does it, does this, if we approve this policy, does it guarantee that we will approve desalter projects?
No.
Thanks.
Okay.
Counselor?
Would you agree with?
I do agree with that.
Thanks.
I have a tag-on question for Mr. Pratt. You said that the mitigation and monitoring plan or program would come to the board and be approved by the board, and yet that's not really what it says in the second paragraph of the...
That would be our intent. This is a strong man proposal. Everything's up for change.
So perhaps that part should be changed, where it says the executive officer approves that it would...
Oh, we can do that.
Yeah, approved by the board.
Yeah. We'll make, the executive officer will make a recommendation to your board.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay. Dave?
Or Gene? A couple of things, Tully. I, seconding Mr. Orr's comment, I think it'd be a good idea to, in developing the policy, to include some, some requirements for public outreach, some stakeholder process before it gets here. Better that the conversations are had with everybody outside the boardroom, and hopefully a consensus comes here rather than free-for-all. So to the extent that that's possible to develop in the policy, that might be helpful. And similarly, I guess, Mr. Grether's comments, I don't think it would be disadvantageous for the policy to express a non-exclusive preference for regional solutions as opposed to individual user solutions. Again, not that it would be mandatory, but that's why I phrase it as a non-exclusive preference. With respect to developing the policy, the language of the, and I understand the need for some flexibility, but the language with respect to your monitoring and contingency plans, I thought should be developed a little more, a little more firmed up, maybe a little more specific along the lines of the details that you've worked out with the City of Camarillo. If there's a need for any part of the, of a plan, it seems to me that's the part. The rest of it is fairly extraneous, and if there's going to be some, some legs and some teeth, it should be there. And then I'd ask also, it's a fair question to ask whether or not we need the same policy in each of the separate basins. To the extent that the situation with respect to brackish water is different in one basin or another, is the, do you need the same policy? Or is the policy, should the policy be flexible enough to accommodate different circumstances in the respective basins? And last, it just seems to me that the unspoken question in all of, in, I guess, underlying a lot of the opposition, and perhaps as well as the motivation for the policy, is the whole question of whether or not, you know, brackish water is included in the, you know, volume of water that gets allocated. You know, I know under the 2007 management plan, that was not so. And in fact, the way you introduced this, I thought was, was, you kind of, kind of affirmed that when you indicated this was a framework for consideration of projects that might develop new water outside of existing allocations. In developing this policy, I think it's fair to ask the question first, and maybe it's a policy question that the board needs to be considered, should brackish water be part of existing allocations going forward? Because if it is, that has a big, makes a big difference on, on how this kind of policy gets implemented and by whom. Thanks, that's all.
Dave?
I'd like to refer the directors back to John Chris's letter from the Farm Bureau. And I think it states it pretty clearly, and what I'm going to say dovetails right into what Mr. West just said. What we previously thought in 2007, and even in discussions not but maybe a year and a half or two years ago, was very much in support of all kinds of projects that would bring new water to different areas. But on the third paragraph, John says, "SIGMA changed the rules of the game." And that's really truly the case. I think we are required in terms of considering brackish water as part of the water of a basin, I think yes. SIGMA makes that pretty clear. And so there's a lot of concern out there that by having this separate policy, this policy ahead of the GSPs, I think that is well-meaning and something that I would have supported immensely back in the day, SIGMA has changed the rules. We need to consider what's going on down gradient from projects. We need to consider the beneficial uses of perhaps marginal water, but people are still using it anyway. They're blending it, they're figuring it out. They've been doing that for a long time. So, and then there's the concept of our policy in front of us of somehow developing thresholds and contingency plans when we don't even know what the criteria are yet from the GSP process seems to be incongruent with what we ought to be doing. So I've, for a couple of months now, I've been liking to see this policy go away, and I remain in that frame of mind. I think it, it has no place in what we should be doing here, and we ought to get on with our GSP process and fold this into that process and make it part of that. And let's do the job that the state has mandated us to do.
As I, as I've listened to the comments, both from staff and the public, read through all the letters, a couple of things pop out to me. And first of all, I think it's important that we all refer back to the draft brackish groundwater project supply policy. And it has the word draft stapled on both sides of it in the background. It's a draft. And I think a comment was made that we're not approving, debating, organizing, or promoting any particular project, we're looking at a policy. Second thing I saw when I read through all these letters was a constant reference that essentially to, I'll paraphrase if I may, that to separate this issue as a standalone policy and give it legs and take it away from the GSP process and make it somehow independent of the total GSP process is the context in which a lot of the letters are written. I strongly disagree with that position. I strongly disagree with the position that creating a policy that deals with how are we going to handle projects that will, that are, and must come online down the road. I don't see this policy discussion as being in conflict with the GSP process. I would disagree with that. And I would disagree that the GSP process and this policy need to all be rolled into one nifty little package and be done for the different basins as the basins go along. I disagree with that. The amount of work and energy of rewriting a policy on a basin-by-basin basis within brackish water, I think negates the fact that there are some overriding issues that are common to all. If, to me, a better way to say it would be, we ought to have an overlying policy. If that policy needs to have some modifications as it goes through a specific basin for those basin's uniqueness, and we need to make some addendums to the policy for that basin, then I would see that that would be a logical sequence. But not to basically say, you develop a groundwater policy in your area, run it through a public process, and do that umpteen times as we try to move forward the GSP. I see it as a policy, a framework. And I also believe that we, that it is not slow, I, my personal opinion is, is that it does not slow down the GSP policy, the process, if we make the policy right. Because it begins flushing out those questions that folks have been asking for a long time. The issue of how to deal with brackish water in the Los Poses area has come up and down in front of this board over the last nine years, 10 years. I've had meetings with a number of you, sitting at eggs and things, talking about how are we going to deal with this stuff in the future? The problem is, is that we've never had the motivation to actually do the heavy lifting that has to be done. In the meantime, we're now at the fifth year of a major drought. No guarantee that we'll be out of that drought going forward. The El Nino Godzilla of all El Ninos did not touch us. Are we foolish enough to believe that we have, that time is on our side? Right now, the Four Bay is approximately 130,000 acre foot below, or a capacity, we see that. The San Feliz Dam right now is at its lowest level, and when United is contemplating taking it lower, so somehow we can dry out the walls and kill the Quagga muscle. And if there's ever an opportunity to do it, now's the time to do it. Those two elements, to fill them back up, we need a diversion capability of an excess of 300,000 acre feet to fill those things up and recharge the aquifer so we can keep going. We didn't get the El Nino. We have to have new supplies of water in this county. United is looking at projects in conjunction with Oxnard and PV and others to figure out how to do that. They need to know a policy by which we will have some review of what we're proposing. This, this is a draft. I, I think John Grether stood up before us today and said, there are things in this draft that are wrong. We've heard Jeff say, then get it to us. Let's change them. Let's make the policy as universal as we can to give guidance to Camarillo, to Oxnard, and to everybody, that the rules of the game have changed because of SIGMA. The comment has been made by a number of folks that SIGMA, and I saw John's, John Chris's letter from Farm Bureau, that SIGMA has changed the rules of the game. I would argue with you that this agency has been trying to tackle this issue for the umpteen years I've been on this board. We've never had the real teeth in this problem until we've gotten SIGMA. But the concepts that we're evading and the concepts that we've been trying to resolve and the problems we're trying to resolve have not changed. Too much demand chasing too little supply. And right now, we have to work on the supply side, and we're looking at controlling the demand side. That's what the SIGMA process tells us to do, and they give us a roadmap. It's a public process. What we need to build into this draft is clear and unambiguous reference to the SIGMA process. John said to us, he said to us under responsibility, in first paragraph, he said, "We need more input into this paragraph." The no debt detriment is not the right terminology. Let's change it. He said, he, he's concerned about the county executive officer having the approval and monitoring authority. He just said, let's just change it. This is a document that can and should be changed. And when we change this document, it gives the folks in every area of the county that are looking at projects, whether it's a city, or a mutual, or it's United, or PV, or whatever, they need to know the framework we're going to operate in. And if that particular basin has unique characteristics that require that policy to have some modifications to it, let's put those into for that area. But they know they're consistent with the major goals and the direction that staff has when somebody comes waltzing in and says, "I'm thinking about doing a project. What are the criteria you're going to hold me to?" It's the same thing we, it's the same policy we gave Camarillo, same policy we gave United, same policy we gave PV, whatever it happens to be. I think that's good public policy, and I think it's better use of the time of this board than doing it on an individual basis. John Grether said that the definitions are wrong. The definition of brackish water is wrong. He doesn't like the wording in the monitoring contingency plan. It's sloppy. That was John's term. I'm not an attorney, but I'll agree with you, John, it's sloppy. He said on the bottom, when John starts making these comments about the word "impact" is so nebulous, it reminds me of my older brother, Richard, if any of you know him. He's nitpicky about this stuff, too. And I go, oh. he's nitpicky about this stuff, too." And I go, "Oh, well, John and Richard know each other. What does it mean?" But it's that kind of feedback, John, that I found incredibly helpful. I don't find the feedback that says, "This policy would interfere with the Sigma process." I believe it works hand-in-hand with it. It's a part of Sigma. It's part of the long term, because we got to deal with this particular water. And if we're going to deal with this water, we got to define the terms by which people can actually touch that water some way or some form, as Camarillo has proposed. And by the way, Tom, I appreciate you saying that this is not a guarantee. You're going to have to make a presentation, and the city's going to have to demonstrate to the public and the audience that any project, and Dave said the exact same thing. John Orr, I think, was correct when, John, you said, where is John? He's around there someplace. There's John. He says he has, the biggest problem he has is with the process. He said, "However it should be within the GSP, not this broad area." I agree with the term process, John, but I don't agree, as I stated, that it should be folded into each specific GSP. I think there needs to be a global policy that guides even the GSP process of what we would be looking for in terms of how we manage this particular asset. And it is an asset, and it's an asset that we may have to put to beneficial use. And we heard Jeff say, and I asked him specifically yesterday, I was in his office specifically today, if down the road, at the check, at the check and balance point, we determine that the aquifer is not performing as we thought it was, or the assumptions that we put in into the rain gods and everything else is not correct, do we have the right, under the contingency plans, that you guys are going to back into any of these projects to make changes? Absolutely. And that's why he stated today. I said, "You need to tell folks that. We need to write that into there, that we have that authority." I recognize it puts a hell of a lot of risk for the individuals that are willing to take the huge financial risk to bring a project online. And maybe if they know that risk going forward, they will determine that it's, "I can't do it yet." That in itself may in fact be an advantage, because that fact alone may drive them to a regional solution because they have to spread the risk. That's a good thing. You were right, Tom, when you said you came before this board, and we pushed back on you, and you reached out on a regional basis to try to solve it for a variety of people. I think that was a good move. How the project shakes out, I don't know. I got to see it when I see it. So I'm not giving you a big green light here. Don't walk out the door with a, "We got a green light." I'm not saying that. I'm telling folks that when they believe we need to do regional things, we've had the ability to do regional things for a long time, but for whatever reasons it never took. Maybe the very fact that we write this policy in such a way that people go, "Ooh, with that level of hurdle that we have to jump through, regional is the only way we're going to solve this thing." Brian Bondi, Brian, in his letter from LPUG, and Andy's letter from LPUG, talks about the process is not completed. We don't need a new separate policy. Again, what I said before. Let me talk about LPUG. LPUG has done amazing work. They've taken a task that we gave them. But let's also be fair. LPUG has been dealing with this problem for eight years. Eight years. Two and a half years ago, if my timing is right, you stood before this board, and you said, "Here's LPUG's understanding of the aquifer. Here's how we're going to kind of divide the pie. X percentage goes to ag, and X percentage goes to here, and if the basin gets real low," you had a big giant bowl up on your screen there, "if it goes low, everybody's agreed, they're going to cut back." We are really marching down the path. Nothing since then. Except, we need more time now.
Keep throwing this stuff out.
Pardon me?
Keep throwing this stuff out.
No.
For how we even flip.
But Andy, Andy, my comment to you, my comment to you is, I believe that this policy that's here can be written with enough flexibility and reference to the Sigma process that it forces entities that you need to be able to get into your tent, each other's tent, will actually help you, not hurt you. Sigma has changed the rules of the game in the fact that we now have to go through a much more lengthy public process. And I think that's great. But it's not inconsistent with what we've done in the past. My sense is, is that this draft as written is not acceptable. In fact, not since, I know, it's not directable. It's not acceptable. However, I do think we need to have a policy. And my recommendation to staff and to the board and to everybody is, we need to go through this thing and doctor it up and make this policy work, and make all the reference we need to the Sigma process and the proposed language of the state coming down. I think you need to do all of that. And I think that that policy then can be used by a variety of people who are contemplating projects that are out in the mill right now on how they're going to proceed to make this work.
Make the motion?
Mr. Chair?
No, I want to...
Yeah, I've got some things to say.
Well, I haven't had a chance to talk.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
If you're finished. Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay. I agree with everything Gene said. I agree with most of what Lynn said, except people have been hearing me talking about the length of time it takes to get anything through this agency, and I hope that Sigma doesn't slow it down too much more, Mr. Chair, because I think that, well, Camarillo has been making presentations on its project, for example, for seven years. And every time, we're told to go do more, go do more. And we've gone done more and gone done more, and rules have changed, and we've changed. And at some point, you just have to go do more, and that's the end of it. You can't do anymore. I agree that our objectives as a groundwater preservation agency are to preserve and manage the basin, or the aquifer. And that hasn't changed at all with Sigma. It's the same now as it was. What we have are areas that are being contaminated as time goes by by migrating plumes. And these things have to be addressed, because the water in certain areas is becoming more and more contaminated. And I'll give you one example. We have two wells that we used to be able to pump and blend at 50/50. We can't blend 50/50 anymore, and very soon, we're going to have to just abandon them and not pump from them altogether, because the water is being contaminated so much by the migrating plume. I believe we do need a policy. I think we need to keep working on the policy. I don't think we need to tell staff, "Well, ditch this, and after we adopt Sigma, we'll form a policy." We need to keep working on it, because people, it takes a lot of time to get these things through. And people need to know what the ground rules are. This is the beginning. This is not saying, "If you do all this stuff and nothing else comes up, we automatically approve it." We've never acted like that. So I just think that Sigma is all about this. This is not a standalone policy. It was never intended to stand alone. As soon, it goes along with everything that we're operating under now. And in the future, when we adopt Sigma, it will go along with that plan. I don't see anything in this plan, considering that revisions will be made, that, or in this policy, considering revisions that would be made, that would in any way be against what we're directed to do under Sigma. So I can support directing staff to move forward with amending the policy, and at some point, bring it back to us. And I don't think that adopting this policy should get in the way of placing Camarillo's project on the agenda in the future.
Dave?
You receive, we received the comments, we did, because after two tries at this, without significant changes to the policy, people were very concerned about what can happen. We've got a couple of disalter projects that, and let's be clear, we're all for new supply projects. It's not about stopping that. It's about new rules in the game. And we put a policy in place that's broad, and all we've got to look at is what was presented to us. That's what people have a problem with. That's the comments we received, is what was written. You're going to get people going to the front line. You're going to have perhaps desalter projects that don't take into account the broader needs of the basin. As it's written now, that's a potential possibility. Now, if it came back in some different format that took in all the Sigma language, perhaps it's something I could get behind. But what we've been presented with twice now, without significant changes, it's been a very, in my opinion, a very single-minded approach. No. It's not reasonable. It's not equitable for entire basins, and it's not doing what we're supposed to be doing as an agency. So I think, as it stands now, this is a bad idea. And then, here's another thing. We hear from regulators a lot that, "Oh, this policy is changeable," or this is, you know, something the board can always come back and change later. And if that's the case, why do we need it at all? Why don't we just have Sigma? Why don't we just use the GSP process? If the intent of a policy is for direction, for guidance of staff about how to review things, that's one thing. But that's not what's before us at this point. So this concept of being changeable down the road, just because we believe things are different, we all know that's not that simple. Things get in place, and ordinance get ruled, and resolutions get in place, and those become the foundation blocks for a direction of agencies that perhaps is the wrong direction. And I think this policy right now is the wrong direction.
Gene?
Steve?
Well, I think that the fundamental question is, can you adopt this policy and still do a good job of putting your GSPs together? And I think that some people who, predominantly, we heard from a procedural standpoint, a lot of people saying, "You can't do this until you do your GSPs." And I think that's the fundamental question. I don't see it that way. I don't see that you, there are some people that are, I believe, are opposed to the, to particular projects, as you're referencing. And one of the ways to stop that one or either of those projects is to not adopt this policy. But...
I have to disagree with you there. I'm going to interrupt you, because the Moore Park Disalter is a great project, and it has a lot of potential for solving problems in the Los Poses area. But as it's proposed now, as it has been presented, it's about increasing allocation for one user at the detriment of others. That's not an equitable situation, and that's not cooperative.
So you're opposed to the Moore Park Disalter project as it's currently designed?
No.
As it's currently conceived to be operated? So you're opposed to that?
I'm opposed to the current corporations. The project itself is a good project, and it has a lot of good concepts in it. But it's failing to take into account the needs of the basin.
So I would, I would offer that's consistent with my point. And my point is, that some people, if they're opposed to the current configuration of the Moore Park project, one of the ways is to make sure this doesn't go forward. The fundamental question is, can we adopt a policy that doesn't guarantee that the Moore Park project's going to go forward, the Camarillo project's going to go forward, and get moving on at least getting one, one step in policy creation started here? And I think that fundamentally can do that. So I haven't been convinced by the arguments that you have to do the GSP before you can adopt this policy. This policy has a tremendous amount of flexibility built into it. I think there's, there's good suggestions for modifications of this policy, so that the policy can be adopted, and we can still go forward with GSPs, and adopt it in a way that doesn't guarantee that these other projects have to be approved in their current form or in any form. That's a separate question that, believe me, when they come forward, will be hotly debated. And we'll have the full authority of this board to say yes or to say no to those projects. And I just don't think that adopting this, this project, I mean, adopting this policy does that. But this does get us moving, and getting moving is a challenge, as Director Craven has pointed out. I would propose that we make a motion that somehow captures, I don't know, there's been so many suggested amendments, that I don't know that we could capture all that in a motion, and perhaps that the motion is to direct staff, based on the comments that they've heard, to make their best effort to make a modification of this policy, bring it back forward to us. But bring, but with the intent that, yes, we've, we've crossed the Rubicon on whether we are going to adopt or not. We have to see what we get, but that it's at least possible that we could adopt the policy before we do the GSP plans.
I would, I would propose, the first question, if, the first question in my mind is, do we need a brackish groundwater project supply policy? My answer to that is, I believe yes. Is this policy, as it's written, meet that criteria? The answer is no. My recommendation would be, to staff, is that every line, every word, needs to be looked at. To the public, every line and every word is open for people to weigh in on. That's the public process. We have to do that. And out of that, we should have an overriding groundwater, a brackish groundwater project supply policy. That is a overriding policy. As we work through our GSP projects by basin, if modifications to that overall policy needed to be add, subtract, whatever we have to do to make it work for that particular unique circumstance, and I do believe there are unique circumstances, then we need to make those modifications. We need to, we need to telegraph to anybody, any entity, public or private, that is contemplating using some water project that touches or uses brackish water, that there are some overriding policy statements that they're going to have to live with. And they ought to know that going into the decision-making process. I think that's consistent with the GSP. I think that in fact helps the GSP, because it takes a huge burden of debate off the GSP, out of the different groups per se, because it is a policy issue, and it needs to be elevated to the board. And we said we would, we would retain at the board level the ability to make policy. This is a policy statement by definition. And how we set it up, we want people to input it in. And I would agree that, that the language is not right. We heard that from a variety of people. But the under, for me, the fundamental statement is, do we need a policy? I do believe we need a policy. And I think it's consistent with the GSP.
So I would move to direct staff to continue working on this, taking into consideration all of the comments that were made and by the public as well, comments for improving the wording of the policy, as well as some additions that were suggested, and bring it back to us.
A second. So we have a motion, a second. Discussion.
I appreciate moving along on this issue. And as a, as a pure tool for guidance for staff, policy in my mind does have merit. But I question what kind of policy we're going to end up with, if it's just truly guidance. Because doesn't in fact Sigma give us the same guidance? And if the idea of the policy is to ensure, is to give some sort of sense of certainty for project components, and yet our policy is so broad, with so many caveats and so many hoops to jump through, what certainty are we providing? And so at the end of the day, what's the relevance or benefit of the policy if it's so broad and just so much in guidance, which is really about the only thing I could approve? What's the point? But if this group feels like that's something that they think is important for staff to have as a guidance tool, as a way to consider these things, then I'm, I don't know how I feel about it.
My, my comment to all of us would be, staff has... My, my comment to all of us would be, staff has listened to all this discussion. They have read, we have read all these letters. We've listened to all the input that people have get in, have given. And we need to make sure that the policy works for brackish water, references the GSP, complements the GSP, and doesn't create a separate pathway that somebody at some point in the future can come out and wave, you use the term, a get-out-of-jail card, and say, it doesn't apply to me because I've already got my ticket. That ain't going to happen. We need to build that into the policy, whatever it takes, so that people understand that you're taking a risk and we're all taking a risk because we all don't know what the world's going to show. And this year was another perfect example of it. Tammy? Yeah?
Director Moore?
Yes.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Bennett?
Yes.
Director West?
Yes.
No.
Okay. We have before us executive officer report, administrative report. Anything on that?
No.
Please receive and file.
A second?
Second.
Any objection? So ordered. Okay. We're adjourned to the May 25 meeting.
As long as everybody's in the room. Not only do we have all the discussion, but for those of you who don't know, we've got all this tape. Any, any of this can be reviewed by anybody from the comfort of your room or your computer sits. So it's on the GMA website, word for word.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you for the discussion.